2016 meeting. Thank you all for being here. Roll call please. Wayne Moore. I'm sorry, Hank Owen. Here. Victor Gunn. Here. Mark Menzati. Here. Shelley Moore. Here. Perry Rediger. Here. Rita Snyder. Here. Joseph DeZer. Here. Counsel, we need to adopt the agenda if I can have a motion.
Uh-huh.
Shelley Moore by Snyder.
Second.
And second of the votes there. Any discussion? Those who pay right?
Aye.
Those opposed? Presentations. Counsel on your agenda, proclamation for Girl Scout Week. We did a photo with between 10, 15 Girl Scouts. We have 345. They're usually in every year and want to come in early. Also some parents and some scout leaders. It'd be a pleasure to recognize Girl Scout Week before we had our public meeting for the police station. Souls for souls. Anyone here for souls for souls? We haven't before had quite a few people here. This thing's come around almost every month. They've done a lot of work through the years since 2006. Over 21 million pairs of shoes shipped over 127 countries and to all 50 states. So a lot of work that's done under the leadership of San or Lutheran Church, Marcy's Planet Shoes, Baptist Student Center, and Southeast University, Missouri State University. So we recognize that again as Souls for Souls Week this week, or this month, at the end of the month, March 27th through April 3rd. You know, I see the trailer out there along Kings Highway and they fill it up every year. Recognize them for the work that they do. Infectious Disease Overview. And I think I see Jane back in the back. Jane, the Wurman, if you would come forward please. Thank you for being here.
Thank you to the council for having me come tonight. I laid a packet about the presentation on your seats there, so you can have that to refer to. I also have a brief PowerPoint, so I may go through those slides rather early, but you do have the presentation in front of you. Also have some handouts back here on the media table that everyone is welcome to take back with you to your place of business or work or whatever, and distribute those out to the public. Before I get into the presentation, I would just like to say another thank you and recognition that's overdue. I wanted to thank Julie Thompson and the Parks and Rec Department, the Cape Fire Department, and Police Departments for assisting us and the Humane Society with the animal emergency shelter that we had to open during the flooding episode through December and January. Our long relationship with the city and the use of city facilities has just been fabulous. You don't know how tremendous that is when we're hit with a disaster to have those resources to use. We did have an animal shelter at the 4H building. We were open for about 11 days and housed 43 animals. Thank you to the departments that helped with that. To give you just a little bit of a history, we have in Cape Girardeau an infectious disease task force. And this is a group made up of medical providers, the hospitals, the universities, schools, businesses, both the fire and police departments, and even some businesses are participating in that. We try to convene at least annually to discuss if there are any new and emerging infectious diseases. Sometimes there are, sometimes there aren't. We've been meeting since about 2007, which was prior to the big H1N1 flu episode that we had. So over the years, we have dealt with the H1N1 episode, the pandemic influenza, last year with Ebola, and now on the horizon, we have Zika virus. So a lot of great minds were very fortunate in this community to have that task force. We have four infectious disease doctors in our community, so we have a lot of expertise out there to help guide us along. And we just felt it was appropriate to share with the council some of the information about the Zika virus. US policymakers are critical in helping aid us to respond to disasters and our ability to do some preventive work. So Zika virus. Just a little bit of history on it. It was first discovered, if you want to use that term, in 1947 in Uganda. Has kind of laid below the radar since then. There was an outbreak in the Polynesian Islands in 2013, and as many of you know, a recent outbreak in Brazil is what has kind of brought this to the forefront. Zika is transmitted to people through the bite of a mosquito, a gipti, and it started out in the tropical regions. This is the same mosquito that transmits the yellow fever, chikungunya, and dengue fever. It has recently also been identified that it can be spread through sexual contact. And CDC does recognize that it does have the potential to spread not only through the mosquito bites, but also possibly blood transfusions and from the unborn, from the mother to the unborn fetus. Just some pictures of what those lovely mosquitoes look like. The one on the left is the culprit, the yellow fever mosquito. The one on the right is an Asian tiger mosquito, which is what we see predominantly in our area around here. And not all mosquitoes are alive. Some are different. The one that's responsible for the Zika virus has its biting habits during the daytime. The one that we commonly see, which causes West Nile, also transmits encephalitis and heart or parasites to dogs, has a biting time of dusk to dawn. So a little bit different cycle on the biting times. Sure if you can tell from that map, the left-hand side are where you're seeing the yellow fever mosquito, the one that is causing the Zika virus, mainly in the southeastern part of the United States. And again, the Asian tiger mosquito, we start to see creeping up the Midwest, and it is in Missouri. This is what Zika looks like worldwide, where it's predominantly occurring, South and Central America, in the dark purple colors there. And just a listing of all those countries where they have actual cases of Zika that are from mosquito to human. The next map shows the states within the United States that actually have cases recorded of Zika. Now, these are not mosquito-borne transmission, these are travel transmission. These folks have been outside of the country, were bitten by a mosquito in another country, have come back and are diagnosed in the United States. The majority of those, I think 42 are in Florida. This map was printed or was updated by CDC March 2nd. On March 4th, which was last Friday, we did receive notification that we do have one case in the state of Missouri, not from Cape Girardeau County. Just as a bit of information, there is a network between the local health departments, the state, and CDC that if we had someone that we were considering testing for Zika virus, we, as a local public health agency, would be notified and of course would be informed if that ever came back positive. But there are no cases in Cape Girardeau, not even any under suspicion. The Zika virus itself has an incubation period of a few days. Up to 80% of those infected may or may not show symptoms, or if they have symptoms, they may be very mild. The symptoms that an individual might have are fever, skin rashes, eye infections, muscle and joint pain, resembles a lot of other things that we might see, especially in the fall, it kind of resembles the flu. Those symptoms are usually mild and last about two to seven days. There is no treatment as far as specific treatment for Zika virus. There is no vaccine against Zika virus. Usually folks who become ill with the Zika virus, it's recommended that they get plenty of rest, drink fluids, and treat the pain and fever with the common over-the-counter medications. If symptoms would get worse, of course, they would probably need to seek medical care with their private provider. The greatest risk appears to be if the individual is pregnant or thinking about becoming pregnant and they become infected. The end result is that infants born of these infected women, they have seen an increased occurrence of microseptum, which is the small head, small brain development, which can go on to lead to developmental delays, developmental disabilities throughout the rest of their So again, no local mosquito-borne Zika virus, these cases in the US, they're all travel associated, 153, and that was, I guess we could bump that up to 154 now that we have one in Missouri. So now that we've kind of looked at what Zika is, how it's transmitted, what can we, as public health, what can we as a community do to prevent it, one of the biggest concerns, our biggest areas that we can do is continue mosquito control, recommend the use of insect repellent. I have another handout back here, which kind of gives you a list of different insect repellents that are recommended. Know your travel risks. We at the Health Department give advice a lot on for individuals who may be traveling outside of the country, what immunizations do they need, what parts of a country are you going to, are there any health risks in that area? So know where you're going and know what travel risks are there. If an individual, a female, is going to be traveling out to one of these areas, consider postponing pregnancy or not going at all until after maybe we have a control on this. If pregnant, of course, use insect repellent and avoid mosquito bites when possible. So in summary, Zika virus again is caused or transmitted by the mosquitoes. Usually mild symptoms, usually no specific treatment for that or vaccine currently available. The best protection is to avoid areas where the Zika virus is occurring or being transmitted by those mosquitoes, and then preventing yourself or using protection against mosquito And what should the community do? Well, we would encourage mosquito control efforts at both city and county levels. Educate the medical community. We have a system at the Health Center, and most of your local public health agencies do, where when we receive a health alert, such as when the information first came out about Zika, we, it's called our broadcast fax or broadcast email, we rapidly send it out there to all medical providers in the community so that they have the most recent information that we have. If an individual is suspected of having Zika, we do have a hotline more or less directly to CDC where medical providers can consult with the experts there as far as how to handle any kind of treatment or medical care. And educating the public, which is another role that we do within why we're here, is to get that information out. We're working with Nicolette and Jessica. They have a PIO Association, Public Information Officer Association, and they are currently helping us with getting messaging together and what ways can we get that out there? Television, radio, newspaper, Facebook. So those are some of our biggest concerns, is getting that information out. That is a very quick overview of Zika, but wanted to share that information with you. And are there any questions?
Counsel? Is the biggest threat to the Zika virus a bigger threat in this area than it was in the west part?
From my understanding, it's mosquitoes that we have, the type of mosquito that we have, the yellow fever mosquito or the gipti, is not predominantly found here. I don't know that they've identified that there are any here at all. However, I have read some things that say, you know, with travel coming back, could a mosquito survive a trip back to the United States and we bring in that mosquito population here?
But we do have cases of what's not.
We do have cases of what's now, right. And so that's why we would also recommend to go ahead and continue to do mosquito control and mosquito abatement using insect repellents. The poster back there shows different ways around your home that you can prevent mosquito breeding, avoid cooling water around the area. So yes, we're probably as concerned with the transmission of that as we are with Zika.
Anyone else? Jane, thank you.
All right.
And thank you for all you do. Well, we do do mosquito control. We have, used to, we had the mister that went around. That's proven not effective, so we have, we now use that and control the standing water. So we spray standing water around and make that available, you know, if people were reported. So that's another thing that if you see standing water, let the person know and they can spray it if they haven't already got it on their wrist. But that's proven to be given a more of a stage and spray, so that's a very good part of that.
Communications. I would comment on several counsel and staff attended the Old Town Cape annual dinner February 25th. Full room at the event center at odd. Scott commented, and I observed, that five, six years ago, we were at the dock with about 40, 50 people with the little setups in the aisle, and it was, it had energy, but enthusiasm, but it was still a small group. And now it's upward of 300, and we've accomplished so much, and the facility added out wasn't even in our thoughts at that point in time. Congratulations to Old Town Cape and everyone that works so hard in the Old Town area to enhance our Old Town Cape area. It is recognized. I attended along with Councilman Menzati, Little Mermaid Junior High Musical Saturday evening, and wish your proclamation to Mike Dumie and Mark, the coin to the city. Mark, I'll let you expand on that a little bit.
Well, as always, for those of you who are not aware, Mike Dumie is junior high choir director. And for the last 25 years, Mr. Dumie has been performing musicals at the Central Junior High. His first musical, he had almost 50 kids, and this musical had in excess of 130 kids participating in it. High energy, amazing what those 13-year-olds can pull off, especially in light of some of the things that 13-year-olds don't pull off or do. It's just stunning to me what he gets out of those kids. He certainly has shared his gift with the community for 25 years. In excess of 3,000 students there, and I had great pleasure in being able to present that award, proclamation, the coin. For the first time in his life, his wife shared with us that he was actually...
And he even admitted it.
He admitted it, his wife admitted it, and it was really neat to see somebody in their element with an entire room, an auditory handful, people appreciative of what he had done. A recipient who didn't realize, I think, the impact he's made. To watch that, and watch the receiving line he had to deal with after the final night was really cool. Mayor and I stepped back and watched a line form down one of the aisles that was probably 50 to 65 minutes long, of people who had come that night and wanted to say something to him, including, I thought was cool, his first mermaid, which was, his first show was The Little Mermaid. He always saves The Little Mermaid to be his last show, so his first mermaid was there.
That's there.
Very exciting.
There's so many, so many individuals, and each in their own way, that make, have a part in our community, making us the community that we are, the great city that we are.
And you know what, Mayor, I would take the opportunity to, that was something that was sort of on our radar because of Mike's effort, commitment to this church. And my children, actually, I've been students, participated in it and/or or around that event, but I would encourage other council members to identify those individuals in the community and make a little effort. Staff, fantastic job writing the proclamation, Bruce, whoever helped you, if there was help. You know, it was really well done. Staff created a very nice proclamation and plaque for presentation, and it takes though initiative from us on the council to try to do that, and sometimes that gets lost. But the reward of doing it that night is profound, and that reward can be added in other places as well.
Okay. Thank you, Mark. I'd like Chief Blair to comment on last Saturday's Citizen Police Experience.
Last Saturday, we held our second Citizens Police Experience, and our very own Development Director, Alex, went through that. I tried to recruit him after the event, but he said he'd go ahead and keep working for a while.
It was a nice job.
But he did an exceptional job. He held his own with one of our bigger officers in a little wrestling match, and I think he only got shot a couple of times at the end of the event, but five, a couple of five, who's counting? But the event is selfish for you. We had 18 participants, and each one of them had very glowing remarks, and so they really raised their awareness for what police officers actually encounter in the city of Cape Girardeau. So I even had one of our local prosecutors at the end comment, every prosecutor should have to do this to get a job, so. Very successful event.
Thank you for the effort on the human year department. That's your effort, but well worth it, and we thank all of them for their extra effort. Other counsel?
Continuing the theme of public safety, I want to thank City Manager's Office and Police Chief, as well as the Downtown Cape Girardeau CID for the partnership they've established to increase foot patrols and bicycle patrols in downtown Cape. I think that's going to be a wonderful addition with the growing number of visitors we have to our downtown. I think that's going to make, increase the sense and the reality of safety, and definitely a great partnership between the city and Old Town Cape and the city.
Thank you, Jane. And what else?
Yes, I would like to talk about the SNAP group that stopped needless acts of violence, please. And these are mothers that, as five mothers, that lost their sons during the last two thousand and fourteen, so, you know, this past fifteen. They had a meeting the other night at Salvation Army, there was about 60-plus people there, community people, then we had representation from the City Manager and the Police Department. And it was a good meeting, very good, very good. Lot of feedback, lot of encouragement. So we're going to do it again. It'll be March 23rd at Salvation Army again, only the time change is 5:30 PM. And we're asking every and anyone that wants to come to be a part and have solutions and answer that they may want to introduce, they are welcome to come. The mothers are trying to get change, you know, in our A12, on the south side, and I'm working with them. And it's promising, and it's exciting at the same time to see people come together on one focus and one voice. So if you want to come, you're welcome to come, it is SNAP. Stop needless acts of violence, please.
Thank you very much for that and your involvement there, Shelley. Give the date again.
March 23rd.
5:30?
5:30.
March 23rd, 5:30.
Salvation Army.
At Salvation Army. Okay. Anyone else?
Mayor, I would like to thank Julia and her team, because she and I had a fantastic time at the father-daughter dance. How many people were in attendance?
It was our largest event, largest father-daughter dance ever, so I think we probably exceeded almost to over 1,000.
Yeah, that's amazing. No, it was our first one. We counted down for about two weeks, counting days, and now we're counting down to go to Colorado, so.
Well, thank you. I've enjoyed it.
We're very excited. We're very excited. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else?
Just want to note, in study session, we talked about our audit, and that's really the most exciting thing you've ever heard in your life, but it is, because they took a, you know, an audit, an extensive audit, and the word that we got was very good. And so the financial condition of the city is good, but what this is, what this says is that the way we track it, the way we do it, meets all the standards. And then they had one thing that they want us to include, and it was a very good audit, so.
Okay, thank you. Before we leave communications, Mr. Councilman Menzati. I have been handed a note here, thank you for that, apparently have a little intel, that there might be a young man in the audience that might be a voice scout. Is that right?
Yes, sir.
Could you come forward? Would you mind coming up? Can you tell the council your names, huh?
I am Zach Cook of Troop B, and the senior patrol leader.
Senior patrol leader, very good. So how long have you been involved with Scouts?
Not including Cub Scouts, I've been in it from fifth grade, and now I'm in high school.
Wow, very good. Congratulations. Congratulations, and so as a troop leader, is that what you said?
Yes.
Tell me, how does one become a troop leader?
You go to a special training camp called NYLT, National Youth Leaders Training, and you go there, you meet new people that you've never met before. If your friends go, they get separated from you, so you make new friends. And you get paired up in a group with your own troop, a new troop, and you are given these tasks you have to do, and you have to know how to make your guests lunch, dinner, and breakfast. But the tasks require teamwork, leadership, and cooperation with the people that you work, that are in your troop and your group.
So you learn how to work together and learn how to ultimately become leader in your group of peers there, and now you're a leader amongst your peers in your troop, is that right?
That kind of, that's good. Kind of works the same way when you get to adulthood, doesn't it?
It does. I think that maybe we might have a chair sit up here for you one of these days when you grow, get a little bit older, so. We certainly appreciate how much dedication you've given to that. Are you working towards a final goal?
My eagle.
Are you?
Eagle.
Fantastic. Well, we're proud of you, and know that we'll be behind you 100%. Can you tell me who you're here with tonight?
I'm here with my grandpa.
Grandpa? Any grandpa's name?
Rob, Rob Cook. His father is also an eagle.
Well, generally, good stock.
They say eagles are like 2% of the stock.
Yep, that's fantastic.
We've got about six months left. Should have, yes.
Fantastic. Well, tell your, not tell, not only your grandpa, because we're going to get a chance to tell him thank you for supporting this young man and making him a better member of the community through all your efforts. I'll tell your mom and dad that as well. We're certainly proud of you, and we're thankful that you're here. Are you working on a particular badge?
Not yet.
Or are you just coming to hang out with the city council? They're so much fun to meet.
Not yet.
Perfect answer, so. Thank you very much, thanks for coming out.
Thanks for being here.
All right. We have no public hearings this evening. Anyone here to appear before the council on any item that is on the agenda? Yes, ma'am?
My name is Sharon Hill.
Can you come forward, please? Copy that, Sharon Hill?
Yes, sir.
Okay, welcome.
Thank you. My name is Sharon Hill, and I'm here on behalf of the Police Department. And I think it should not be moved. There's enough crime in the city without it going away from us now. The rape, the killings in apartments building right around this area, that you are not able to contain, let's know the break-ins, the stores, and all of this, next to schools. What about the hospital? Even the abuse and the beating. I think that we should keep it right here where it is and make it better, because we need you all. You're all we got. And if we can't pattern ourselves after who brought us up, then what will we do? Who will lead us? Who will guide us? When all we know is you. When all we know is you. Or we ever had the threat to follow is you. Instead of teaching kids how to plant a seed because foreign food make us sick, you just dropped it. Okay, they don't even know how to till the land. So after you all go, who's going to feed us? Who's going to help us feed ourselves? Who's going to do recycling? Who, can you tell me that Iran? Can you tell me that China? Can you tell me anybody else that's going to help us to survive? No, they're not able, they don't know our technology. And I'm one that knows us best as you are. So you will be the elder congo for that. I believe that you believe in the most high life I do. And it's up to you to lead us and guide us right. And you've been doing a good job, and I don't ever want to see you quit.
Okay, very good. What's your address?
My address is fourteen, eighty, Independence. Here on the half of Karen Harvey. She's in hospital, and she could not be here.
Okay. Very good. Thank you for your words. Thank you for being here. Is there anyone else? Okay, Eric, will you take us through the late theme?
Yes, sir. Number sixteen dash nineteen, an ordinance under chapter fifteen of the State Department of Municipalities, section four twenty-six, section four twenty-seven, by the Department of Public Affairs, ordinance under chapter fifteen, the city of Minnesota, section fifteen, four twenty-six, section twenty-seven, the Department of Examiners. Number sixteen dash twenty-two, an ordinance under chapter twenty-five, the Department of Municipalities, Department of Health and Service, ordinance under chapter twenty-five, the Department of Municipalities, Department of Health and Service. Number sixteen dash twenty-three, an ordinance under chapter four, the city governing the streets and sidewalks in the State of Cape Verde, Missouri, ordinance under chapter four, the city governing the streets and sidewalks in the State of Cape Verde, Missouri. Number sixteen dash twenty-seven, ordinance authorizing City Manager Executive and STP Urban Program Supplemental with Missouri Housing and Transportation Commission for the Metropolitan Street and Borough intersection in the State of Cape Verde, Missouri. An ordinance authorizing City Manager Executive and STP Urban Program Supplemental with Missouri Housing and Transportation Commission for the Metropolitan Street and Borough intersection in the State of Cape Verde, Missouri. Number sixteen dash twenty-eight, ordinance exception to permanent San Cherry series, meaning permanent list station using from nickel properties, L.C., and directed permanent San Cherry series, and corrected permanent waterline using in permanent list station using from capable of properties, oil, and water for the Silver Springs apartments project in the State of Cape Verde. And on the exception to permanent San Cherry series and permanent list station using from nickel properties, L.C., and directed permanent San Cherry series, and corrected permanent waterline using in permanent list station using from capable of properties, oil, and water for the Silver Springs apartments project in the State of Cape Verde, Missouri. Number sixteen dash twenty-nine, ordinance authorizing City Manager Executive Contract with Urban Engineering for property located in Bay Area, Cape Verde, for phase two in the State of Cape Verde, Missouri. An ordinance authorizing City Manager Executive Contract with Urban Engineering for property located in Bay Area, Cape Verde, for phase two in the State of Cape Verde, Missouri. Number sixteen dash thirty, resolution authorizing City Manager Executive Contract with E.F.A. Inc. for transportation trust fund five projects. Number sixteen dash thirty-one, resolution authorizing City Manager Executive Contract with Urban Engineering and Servicing for transportation trust fund five projects. Number sixteen dash thirty-two, resolution authorizing City Manager Executive Contract with Urban Design Inc. for transportation trust fund five projects. Number sixteen dash thirty-three, resolution authorizing City Manager Executive Contract with Urban Engineering and Servicing for transportation trust fund five projects. Number sixteen dash thirty-four, resolution authorizing City Manager Executive Contract with Urban Design Inc. for transportation trust fund five projects. Number sixteen dash thirty-five, resolution authorizing City Manager Executive Contract with S.E.I. Engineering for transportation trust fund five projects. Number sixteen dash thirty-six, resolution authorizing City Manager Executive Contract with S.E. Engineering, L.C., D.P.A. Hoffman, for transportation trust fund five projects. Number sixteen dash thirty-seven, resolution authorizing twenty sixteen to twenty-one Catholic program in the State of Cape Verde, Missouri. Number sixteen dash thirty-eight, resolution authorizing City Manager Executive Contract with Quikfire and Struggle Engineering, D.P.A. Quikfire and Struggle Engineering, S.A.A., for transportation trust fund five projects. Number sixteen dash thirty-nine, resolution authorizing City Manager Executive Contract with Urban Engineering for transportation trust fund five projects. Number sixteen dash forty, resolution authorizing City Manager Executive Contract with Loffner Corporation for transportation trust fund five projects. Number sixteen dash forty-one, resolution authorizing City Manager Executive Contract with E.F.A. Mulligan for transportation trust fund five projects. Number sixteen dash forty-two, resolution authorizing City Manager Executive First Amendment to Escrow Agreement with Minor Properties, L.P., and Montgomery Bank, for Baltimore Place, for the State of Cape Verde, Missouri. Number sixteen dash forty-three, resolution authorizing City Manager Executive Agreement with the County Council for Emergency Exclusions Grant Funds from Missouri Housing and Development Commission. Number sixteen dash forty-four, resolution authorizing City Manager Executive Agreement with Salvation Army for Emergency Exclusions Grant Funds for the Missouri Housing and Development Commission. Number sixteen dash forty-five, resolution authorizing City Manager Executive Agreement with Catholic Charities of Southern Missouri for Emergency Exclusions Grant Funds from Missouri Housing and Development Commission. Number sixteen dash forty-six, resolution authorizing City Manager Executive Agreement with the State House for Lemony for Emergency Exclusions Grant Funds from Missouri Housing and Development Commission. Number sixteen dash forty-seven, resolution including project for Southeast Hospital financed by the Industrial Development Authority of the County of Cape Verde, Missouri. Number sixteen dash forty-nine, resolution authorizing the agreement, certain actions in connection with the proposed issue of suspension of vacation bonds.
Council, you've heard the consent agenda. Do I have a motion for approval? I move by Azar. Second. I move by Landzati. Any discussion?
Oh, I have a question of City Manager. I know you gave us one explanation, but are we approving contracts for all of these TTF projects depending on the way the money is available?
What we did was, we, we put all of the design contracts, we said, who is interested in, in doing design for the city? And people submitted proposals, and the ones that we felt were qualified, we said, well, go ahead and enter into what we call a task agreement with them. And so this approves all those agreements so that we have the tasks enforced. But you're right, we don't, we don't do those until we have the money to pay for the design. And so then we will contract with them individually as we have individual designs. But it's only as we have money to do it.
My pleasure.
Why don't you change your minds?
Well, we don't, we're not selecting all, this is a pool of consultants we can select from. This isn't, this isn't matching them up to, to certain projects at this time.
You could be pre-approved for a lot of the never actions borrowing, but. Any other questions? vote in favor, aye? Aye. opposed? I got the easy job tonight. Number thirty-one, new ordinance, bill number sixteen dash forty-eight, number seventeen, chapter seventeen, by repeating